Good evening and welcome to North Las Vegas City Hall this evening. We had a little power outage, a bunch of you might have recognized it. It took us a little while to get back in into running order here, so we appreciate you letting us run a little bit late here. But we do welcome you here to our council meeting. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards on the table located outside, or on the rail over here in the podium rail. Please give your card to City Clerk, she sits right here, she'll raise her hand for you, and then she'll pass it up to the Mayor Pro Tem and then we'll read your name. And when I call upon you, I ask that you speak, that you limit your comments over in three minutes and we avoid repetition. Before we get going, I'd like to mention that we have a lot of youth in the audience. It's good to have you here participating in local government. We've got scouts, we've got church groups, we're excited to have young men and women in our audience today. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Mayor, yes, we are.
Thank you. Tonight we have the opportunity to have the invocation given by Matt Butler from the Grace Point Church. Following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ethan Lewick, Troop 524, Luke Juden, Chase Juden, and Tommy Juden of Troop 710. Please rise.
That's pretty good. Heavenly Father, you are gracious and good and holy. We thank you for the access that we have to you and the opportunity to speak with you through Jesus. As tonight's meeting convenes, may we recognize our neediness. So we seek from you these things on behalf of the Mayor and this council. Lord, we pray for wisdom to lead, to lead with confidence and clarity and humility. Lord, we pray for discernment to heed the call of wisdom. Their choices would bring honor to your name and benefit to the people of North Las Vegas. And Father, we ask for your grace, your grace upon grace in our mistakes, our failures and our shortcomings. Jesus, you are and always have been perfect and it is only by your grace and will that this city continues to grow and thrive. We thank you for these leaders, as you bless them, lead them, and to you be the glory, Jesus. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We'd like to leave you in the pledge. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Scouts, and Pastor Butler, for your time this evening for blessing our city council. Moving on to council items, Councilman Barone.
Thank you, Mayor. And of course, you know, I work with young people all the time, so I feel that we have a lot of energy today. I welcome everybody here, too. To begin with, I have a whole bunch of things. A couple of years ago, we started the very first ever Small Business Academy, and I'm very happy to say, Mayor, that we're going to have the next addition, the third Small Business Academy. This is April 20th and the 27th, which will be this Friday, and then the following Friday from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. I think there's still registration for anybody who wants to come and get some information on starting their own business. And recently, I attended a ribbon cutting for a person who started, a North Las Vegas resident who actually started a new flower shop, and that's a fantastic thing. Quan McCall, Mayor, were you an alumni of Quan McCall? Or did you go to Lincoln?
Actually, the first day Quan McCall opened, I was there.
Really?
First grade.
Well, fantastic. Well, they're having their family day. I think Pamela's going with me, right? They're having a family day this Saturday, April 21st, 8:00 a.m. Are you coming too, Pamela?
I'm sorry, I was talking to the guy.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I blindsided you, please forgive me.
Absolutely, I can be there.
Yeah, okay, fantastic. Hey, Sunday, Earth Day, be good to the world. We need it for a little while longer. I don't know about you guys, I plan to be here a little longer. National Guard Spring Fling Day is going to be at the Ready Center on April 28th at 10:30 a.m. I plan to be at that one, and you're going to that one, aren't you, Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, I believe so.
I'm just dragging you guys in with me, whether you guys like it or not, huh? Lincoln Elementary. Again, Mayor, you also went to Lincoln, didn't you?
First grade.
Oh, my gosh, hey. It's like, you know, it's like a family here, I'm telling you. Well, hey, Lincoln, I don't know if you guys know about this, it was demolished because it was an old, it needed a facelift, so much so, they got knocked down, and working with the city staff, thank you very much for the city staff, working with our friends at the school district, when we went ahead and we flipped it over to the park, and the park got flipped to the other side, they're having their building dedication on May 2nd at 4:30, and I'm not sure who's going with me on that one, but maybe one of my friends of the city council. You see, I knew I'd have someone come along with me.
Fourth and fifth grade.
I'm telling you, it's a family here. This thing here at the city council, we're family up here.
I never went to school.
Well, that would make a lot of, well, you're Italian, you didn't need school, right?
No, I didn't need school.
Yeah, you didn't need school. Okay, finally, Fiesta CNLV, I've already forgotten how many years, it's our city's birthday on April 29th. Is it the 71st birthday or the 72nd? I am not good with mathematics. Is it 1946 is when we started, so is that 73 years, 72 years? I'm not good with math, 72 years. So I think it's our 72nd birthday, and so in honor of that, we're having Fiesta CNLV, which is a Latino-type theme, right here in front of the city hall. We have a little park here, and it'll be April 29th, it's Sunday, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Everyone's invited. Please come on by and shake your bonbon, okay? Thank you very much, Mayor, and this is an exciting meeting.
Thank you very much. You know, if they have chilrianos, the mayor will come. Anyway, Mayor Pro Tem, Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. Let me know later where I'm going. A couple of things. One good thing, one not-so-good thing. I'll do the first one over here in order of my attending, the memorial for a fallen airman, Thunderbird, that passed away on April 4th during training exercise over the area of Nellis and the training facilities north towards Creech. It was probably one of the most emotional memorials I've been to. It was held at the Thunderbird Hangar inside Nellis, and being quite a large hangar that it was, there was standing room only in there, and it was very, very sad to see this. The airman's parents were in, and, you know, he was a young man, Stephen Del Bango, who was called Cajun. So he's going to be missed, but that kind of gives us some idea of just how short life could be. We never know when it's going to end, and we need to make the very best of it. So to his family and to all of our other airmen, we appreciate all that you do and all the sacrifices that you make. On a little better note, and it was actually the following day, we had an opportunity, the mayor, myself, and a whole bunch of very, very nice people from the Samoan community. We went out to Sandstone Park, and we did the ribbon cutting for what is going to be, let's call it, I don't know if I can pronounce this word?
Kilakiki.
Kilakiki Field. We have probably the only cricket field in North Las Vegas or anyplace around here. So there was, it was a very, very cold day. There was a lot of young adults out there, and I tried to get the mayor up to dance a little bit, but I got up there. I kind of showed my skill at dancing, which was very embarrassing. Thank God there was no film there, I hope not, Dylan, but it was, it was an amazing comparison between the day before, where I went to Nellis, and this new community that's going to be using this field over here. So we're very happy and proud to have the Samoan community and have cricket over here, and somewhere along the line, I believe, we're going to be going back, my council members and myself, to play a game of cricket out there, to actually try out that cricket pitchfield. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Goyens Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday evening, I had the pleasure and opportunity to attend a CECU Gala Dinner at the Palms, and this is an investor group, Investor Summit, and this was their second annual summit that they hosted here in Las Vegas. It's predominantly a group of Asian investors, and I mention this simply to say thank you so much to Teri Sheridan. The group spoke so highly of the city of North Las Vegas and her presentation earlier that day, and so Gina and Mayor, just thank you for allowing me to go and experience the fun side after you guys conducted all of the business. So it was really, really a phenomenal event, and I got to experience a lot of Asian culture and see a lot of traditional Asian dance and songs and music and things like that. So it was a really, really great evening. Also, next week, April 26th, the Choice Community will hold their second bimonthly meeting at Zion Church from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock p.m., and this is our bimonthly meeting for our Community Choice Engagement Team, and we were just going to update what's happening with the choice process in our Choice Neighborhood Initiative Grant Program that we've been participating in the last couple of years. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilman Black, I see that you have quite a large contingent of young men and women here today. I would like to introduce them and then give you a report.
Absolutely. I'd like to point out these awesome group of young people midway back from the LDS Church, El Dorado Estates Ward. These are some of the finest young people in North Las Vegas with so much potential on those two rows right there, and I'm really glad that they were interested in joining us here this evening to see a little bit about how our city government works. So thank you, guys, for coming, and hope you enjoy yourself. Also, wanted to give a report. On the April 5th, we had an amazing event at Silver Mesa Rec Center. We had the privilege of doing a ribbon cutting for the senior center at Silver Mesa. It's a modular building in the back, 3,000-square-foot footprint for the seniors. It's been something a long time in the making, and there were 60-plus seniors there in attendance at the ribbon cutting. They love it. I was there yesterday with them for about an hour answering questions, and they love their new accommodations. So special thanks to all of the departments that played a role in this within the city, and also, for the record, I'd like to thank County Commissioner Marilyn Kirkpatrick for being a great partner and helping us fund this awesome expansion for the seniors. On the 11th of April, I had the privilege of attending, it's called April Pools Day, and it's an annual event. This is the 18th annual. We were privileged to host it here in North Las Vegas at the Silver Mesa Rec Center Aquatic Area. It's awareness for backyard swimming pool safety and drowning prevention for young people. It's critically important that we all play a role, if you have a backyard pool, to follow the steps and make sure that your area is incredibly safe, and there's high level of awareness for young people when they're in the backyard. And then the last thing on my list is, on the 12th of May, if you'd like to put this on your calendars, I would invite anyone and everyone to join me at 8:00 a.m. at Willie McCool Park. It's out on Horse, on the very far north end of Ward 3. It's the Remote Control Airplane Airport Park. We're doing a park cleanup there, and lots of debris, things to be painted and repaired, and would love anyone to come out and support me in that. We had a great event last month, and I'd like to do a Ward 3 park cleanup about every six to eight weeks. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. You councilpeople are working very hard in your districts, and the city appreciates you. Moving on to the public forum, this is time set aside for public comment on posted agenda items, which this public forum excludes discussions of public hearing items, which will be held separately. Madam Clerk, besides these cards I have up here, do you have any other blue cards coming? Okay, so at this point in time, when I call your name, please come up, and if you would like to talk on a posted agenda item after these people, just raise your hand and come forward. David Brown, would you please come forward? And please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, David Brown, and Council, sorry. David Brown, 9910 West Cheyenne, here on behalf of myself on item number 22. Item number 22 is obviously your city manager appointment that's in front of you. I've come here before you about some of your other staff, Jennifer Duty, who I joke is my sister at the city. I walk into her office, she kicks me out of her office, and for some reason, she keeps inviting me back in. So now, Ryan Juden and I have that same type of relationship as your city manager, and when he was your assistant city manager, we act like brothers, we argue over items. He hung up on me the other day on item number 34, which I'll get to next, but we butt heads, and the reason we butt heads is because I'm here to protect the interests of my client, and that's what I do. I treat my client like it's my own business, and that's why they continue to hire me. What Ryan does well for your city is he treats the city like the city is his own business. He puts everything he has into it, and he puts all his integrity on the line for you as a city. So I think you've got the right choice here. He's going to fight for your city like it's his own business, and I, you know, we appreciate you appointing him as a city manager tonight. And that leads into my item number 34, which is the oversized water line, which I'll move into now, the agreement with my client, MM Mesa 13 and Solo Investments 1. That agreement before you has been a long time coming. This last round, we came to you about two years ago, and we said, hey, we have a brilliant idea. My client bought about 1,000 acres in Apex and put a significant investment into Apex, and he'd like to build a water line to his property, and the city, doing what the city does, recognize the opportunity to oversize that water line. It was an arduous process, to say the least, for the last about 21 months, and since you appointed your new interim, or your interim city manager, hopefully it'll be your new city manager, these last three months, the agreement got done, and it got done in an efficient manner for the city and efficient manner for my client, so we really appreciate your work on that, Ryan, and all your staff. On item number 34, the oversized water line, we mainly want to come up here, and on behalf of my client, thank you for your vision and leadership as a council and as mayor. We've worked on Apex Waterline for a long time. We started the first oversizing, or the first master plan Larry Pogomire started in 2001, and you see Larry back there. He was about 18 when he started this project, and you see him now. He's only 35, he just looks like he's been working on Apex for 20 years. We redesigned that master plan 2001, again in 2007, again in 2015, and we just, five city managers, three mayors later, we finally got the solution. It's because of your leadership and your foresight in this manner, and we thank you for all of that, and we look forward to being your partner.
Thank you very much. The bill went up. What did you say about me again?
(laughing).
No.
I'll say it again, Mayor. You've been excellent to us.
Hey, stay close, because when we get to that item, there might be questions.
Sure, and we've got, just so you know, Atkins, I had more words, I'll just, really quick, if I got another minute. Atkins and Pogomire are both here. Atkins was your third-party validator, and Pogomire is our design engineer, and they've both done a fantastic job in a short amount of time of making sure this both protects the city and works for our client also, so we appreciate them also in this.
That would be great. If they would all just stay put to that item, we might need to get them up here.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ken Craft from the Planning Commission, our planning commissioner, or chairman of the Planning Commission also. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Ken Craft, as you just noted. I live at 3948 Idedown Place in North Las Vegas, and speaking on behalf of myself on item 22 to support the appointment of Ryan Juden as the permanent city manager. In reviewing both the backup documentation along with the city charger, I can't think of no better candidate to fill the role than Mr. Juden. The role of the city manager is to bring together a cross-functional team of city employees, unions, members of the business community, residents, and other stakeholders to implement the policies determined by the city council. In his work with the city since 2013, Mr. Juden has done this time and again. He brought together both public and private entities to get some educational signage for the new Truly Springs fossil beds national monument ahead of the National Park Service. He worked with the city's legislative delegation to insert important language into various economic development bills that will help our city continue to grow and prosper. I've known Mr. Juden since 2009, when we both served together in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So really, Richard, this is all your fault. Working with him there, I saw just how interested he was in getting good policy that would serve the community well. One example is when we were debating putting a splash pad instead of a pool into Craig Ranch Regional Park, the economic downturn had already started, and the city was starting to downsize, both its budget and its workforce. Wanting to ensure we could provide amenity to the residents and do the right thing, Mr. Juden worked with then-Director Henley to pursue replacing the pool with a splash pad. Initially, the city council had rejected the idea of a splash pad, but Mr. Juden, with his leadership, working with both Director Henley and the board, we lobbied the city council to ultimately get that changed. While neither was ultimately built, it was clear then that his focus on getting the right policy was evident to me. In the last five years, I've watched Mr. Juden grow in his role with the city. While he typically shies away from the public limelight after spending time as chief of staff to you all, assistant city manager, and now acting city manager, I'm happy to support his appointment as permanent city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Craft. Appreciate all you do for the city also.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Mr. Mike Yarder, please, from the Police Officers Association.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Michael Yarder, I'm the president of the Police Officers Association in North Las Vegas. I'm also detective on the police department. Having been here almost 20 years, I think I have a unique take on things and an ability to speak on many different issues that involve the city and this police department. And that being said, I know we're here tonight to discuss appointing Ryan Juden as the full-time city manager for the city of North Las Vegas. On behalf of my 300 men and women that I represent on the police department, we will always advocate that you stay internal, if you have good internal candidates, to fill those positions, and we feel that Mr. Juden fulfills that capacity, as he has been the acting city manager for the last several months. I've known Ryan for a long time. I think he does a very good job in the role that he's in. The city manager position, in my humble opinion, has to be a problem solver, has to be somebody who is able to step up to the challenge and advocate for the city, for the citizens, for the employees, for the different bargaining units, to make this a better city. I think he's done a very good job at doing that. Like I said a few months ago, I thought you had a very good internal candidate, and that's why we're here tonight to say we strongly support him in that position. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Lynn Griffith.
Good evening, everybody, Mayor and Council. My name is Lynn Griffith. I live at 5324 Bramar Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, and I am here representing the leadership of Local 14 and all of its members. We are offering our unqualified support of Ryan Juden as your next city manager. Larry Griffith, the local union secretary treasurer, apologized for not being here. He is in California at some seminar classes for public sector, or he would be here. We felt very strongly that Mr. Juden is the right leader at the right time for the city. With his appointment, the city will embark on a journey that will lead to a new, high-performance culture within the city's operations. Mr. Juden fully understands the value and effectiveness of developing collaborative relationships with all of the city's constituents. Our experience with Mr. Juden is as an individual who identifies and understands all the challenges given to him, then works tirelessly to be a part of a solution that satisfies the interests of all parties involved. Therefore, Teamsters Local 14 strongly, strongly supports the appointment of Ryan Juden, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Thank you for coming today this evening. Mr. Doug Dobney?
Dobine.
Yeah, Dobine. I couldn't read your spelling. Okay.
Give me a second there. They were nice enough to give me a chair. Good evening. My name's Doug Dobine, 3416, Cantora Bluff, North Las Vegas. I am your current chairman of the Citizens' Vicerate Committee and has had the pleasure for the last two years of doing so. First of all, I'd like to thank your staff for all the work that they did getting us to where we're at for items 27 and 28. I'd also like to thank all the committee members. We had a very high participation rate of the members, probably the highest of any committee I've ever been on, and I think that's outstanding. Next, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Goyens Brown and Councilman Barone for showing up for our bus tour. It was very satisfying to have you both there. I've been doing this for five years, whether representing the Direct CAC or representing the city at Clark County level, and this is the first elected individuals that have showed up for the bus tour, so thank you very much. As you'll see, we have very little money and a lot of demands. I think we did a great job trying to evaluate everybody on their merits and where the money would do the most good. And again, I just want to thank you very much for letting me do this committee. And as a last note, one of my favorite things about the committee is I got to sit in the mayor's chair for all the meetings. So I just want to know, when are elections for city council or mayor up? Because I really enjoyed that.
I'm looking for my replacement. Welcome.
All right, well, thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Doug. And I recognize behind you, Leonie, our director of that is here, and quite a few other people that support you from our staff. I'm sure that you're giving us a presentation of some sort tonight, is that true? You'll come, okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else that'd like to address the council on any posted agenda items, please come forth at this time. Seeing none, we'll close this portion of the public forum. Moving on to the agenda.
Matters listed on the consent agenda, excuse me, one page back. Item 1, approved city council regular meeting agenda of April 18, 2018, for possible action.
Mayor and Council, the applicant for items 13 and 14 has requested that item 13 be withdrawn without prejudice and that item 14 be continued to the May 16 council meeting. Staff recommendation is to approve the agenda as here amended.
Thank you very much. Council, any comments or questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Matters listed in the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any council item, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
Mayor and Council, the consent agenda consists of items 2 through 10 as presented. Staff's recommendation is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Council asked to, for a motion to approve the consent agenda as motioned, as approved, as discussed, I'm sorry, I'm tired.
Move to approve?
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Thank you. Items passed. Moving on to public hearings.
Mayor and Council ask that presenters for items heard under the public hearing that have an associated item under ordinance's final action state for the record during public hearing if their presentation is for both the public hearing item and the associated ordinance. Associated items under ordinance's final action will be heard and voted on by the council later on in this meeting. Item 11, deny AMP 0418 La Madre Manor for applicant Cavison Homes LLC to amend the comprehensive plan to change the land use from single-family low to single-family medium on property located at the southeast corner of La Madre Way and Commerce Street, APN 12434-801001.
Thank you, Mr. Groenhour.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. My name's Bob Groenhour, 1980, Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant, Cavison Homes, and what I'd like to do with this presentation is this, I'm going to then incorporate it in the other items, or actually the other item that I have, so I can just combine it all together for there. So if I could get your attention to the overhead quickly. This item, or this property, we had several items that were applied for, for the application for single-family development. We have approximately 5.21 gross acres of property here. As you can see here, you have development in the surrounding area. As you may know, this is what we call an infill type of property development. We have some R1 zoning to the northeast and south, and to the west of us, we have a PUD, and we have some multifamily in this area. Typically, when you see parcels like this, or you see on the overhead here, these what we call out parcels or infill parcels, there's a reason why these properties have not been developed, and usually, what comes with that is because there are certain constraints on the property itself that limits a development that would be similarly situated with respect to the other developments that are existing in this area. Cavison Homes is a small residential builder. He has a lot of history of building from American Premier Homes back in the day, has built over about 2,000 homes out here in North Las Vegas itself. They're coming in, and one of their specialties is to help try to clean up these infill type of properties. So with that being said, we of properties. So, with that being said, we submitted a land use application, that's before you, for an amendment to the master plan to change it from the single-family low density to a residential medium density. We went from, we were requesting the zone change from R1, excuse me, from RE to RCL. And then, we had a, an application in here also that was submitted that's, that's been withdrawn, which was item 13, to waive the 100% of the open space. And then, we had a tenant map that is continued for 30 days, which is item 14. The reason why I believe it's important for me, as I go through this, so you could understand some of the history of why we've made some changes as we've walked through the process itself. As you can see here, which is the first site plan that we came in with and submitted to the neighborhood meeting with the neighbors who live in the area. The game plan here is we had 37 lots coming in with RCL, about 3,600, 3,700 square foot lots. We had some open space in this area, as I'm showing you here. We had a trail coming through for some connectivity. We went to the neighborhood meeting, and the neighbors asked for a couple of things. What they asked for is, number one, they asked us to remove the open space. The other thing that they've asked us, the second thing was to try to match the lot lines with the lot lines to the south of us. And the third thing that they asked is to do single-family, or excuse me, single-story homes. Our builder, my client, does not, did not plan on doing two, uh, single-story homes. However, in trying in good, in good spirit and working with the neighbors, he has put in plans now and designed plans for a single-story home. So, after the first neighborhood meeting and showing this plan, we came back with what we call the second plan, which, as you can see here, we actually lost a lot. We went from 37 to 36 homes, and we removed the open space. We met the lots down here to the south, and we were going to agree to do single-story homes. That's the reason why we necessitated the waiver for the open space itself. As we went through the process and where we're here tonight, we withdrew that application for the open space itself. And having several discussions with your staff and other people, what we have is, although this is not before you, but I want to give you an understanding of where we're going, hopefully on May 16, is by removing and withdrawing the open space waiver, we are proposing to come back in May 16 with some open space, which is located here in the middle of the project. But more importantly, some of the issues that were brought up with the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting, and even also with the planning commissioners of the discussion, is we will still keep 10 lots on the back portion, which is the southern portion of the property, which essentially matches the 10 lots that are to the south of us. We will be, we will continue to do single-story homes on the south portion of our property. And on the north portion of our property, initially, we had about 13 homes. So, now, we're going to be matching lot for lot across the street on La Madre Way. So, essentially, we went from 37 homes to 30 homes. Now, although that's not before you tonight to, to vote on, in, in, in the effort of, in the spirit of making sure we negotiate and work through this process, my client wanted to make sure I put certain things on the record. So, when May 16 comes around, you can see exactly and point out on the record that these are the things that we said we're going to do. Why is this important? And why now does it get back to the amendment to the master plan? The reason is, is the low-density residential allows six units to the acre. Okay? The plan that we have here on the tenant map comes out to about 5.76 units to the acre. Now, let me explain. We have gross acreage of about 5.21 acres, and when you divide that into 30 homes, if I did the correct math, it comes out to about 5.758, which is 5.76. The reason why that's important is because we do actually meet the density that is allowed under low-density in your master plan. Unfortunately, the zoning for low-density, you could do RE or R1, if we did R1 zoning, we would not be able to meet the minimum square foot lots that are required in R1 zoning. So, that's the reason why the next application, item number 12, is for RCL. Now, RCL allows for less than, or a minimum of 3,600 square foot lots, but by our proposal, we are more kind of that R1 plus instead of that RCL type of development. And so, from a compatibility standpoint, although we're asking for a higher land use designation and a higher zoning designation, we actually are somewhat in a hybrid between an R1 and an RCL and a residential, well, we're actually within the residential low category for six units to the acre, because you could build up to six units to the acre. So, with that explanation, if I didn't confuse you, hopefully, that you understand that what we believe with the revisions that will be coming back in about 30 days for your staff to review, that actually, we do meet the intent of what a low-density residential development is from a density standpoint. But from a zoning standpoint, by doing the zoning itself, the RCL allows us that flexibility to come in with a different lot size. And that lot size is typically, on here, we have 50-foot wides up to the north and minimum, actually, these are 60s actually, which meet and exceed your R1 width standards with respect to lot sizes itself. So, getting back to the application, we do feel that we do have a compelling justification to come in here with an infill piece of property to allow a similar compatible use. The last thing I want to say is, these home prices are going to be $30,000 to $50,000 higher than the existing home prices that are going to be in the area with the resales. As far as compatibility with the home sizes itself, we did an analysis with a mile radius and a quarter radius, and within a quarter radius, the average home size is about 1,800 square feet. Our home sizes are going to be right in that sweet spot also, anywhere from about 1,600, 1,700 square feet to 2,100, 2,200 square feet in that area, which comes into a similar comparison. But because of the newer home model and the prices, is going to help increase property values in this area. So, with all that being said, we hope you take that in consideration for a justification to allow the land use designation to be approved for the residential medium, and then the subsequent application for a zone change of RCL, with the understanding that we'll be coming back, if these appeals are, are over, over, approved for the project itself, that we'll be coming back with an ordinance for an RCL that would be up for adoption on May 16 with a tenant map, so you could see how that all comes together at that point in time.
Great. Thank you. So, for people in the audience, the planning commission had denied the discussion and sent it up to the city council, and that's what's happening here today. And your presentation was Friday, 11 and 12. Item 13 is being withdrawn, and item 14 was continued to the May 16 meeting. So, your presentation was just for 11 and 12 now. We don't need two presentations, correct?
Yeah, I'm done.
So, I'm going to invite, I'm going to call for public comment for a minute, and if you'd stand by. Is there anybody that would like to come forth and discuss item number 11 or number 12 with the city council at this time? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Kyle Hardman. I live at 113 West La Madre Way. So, I've been to two of the three neighborhood meetings that I knew about. The one wasn't very well advertised, but I would have been there if it was. I've lived on this, or at this property for 13 years. I bought it when it was brand-new, and one of the few original owners there in the neighborhood. And so, you know, I've kind of gone through the dip of the recession and, you know, lost several hundred thousand dollars on my home, and now I've somewhat recovered. When the plans came out, originally, he showed you that first map, and so, we requested some changes, which they did. We appreciate that. My biggest thing was that the lots were very, very small for the area. I wanted it to match the neighborhood. The multifamily, which is an apartment complex, really can't, I guess, be factored in just due to the fact, it's a completely different situation. All the homes around there are anywhere from 6,750, and everything's owned R1 around there. And so, that was the only thing that I had a question about, was making sure that all these new lots conform to the surrounding area. As new homes go, you know, they, they do cost more, as he indicated. I've been a real estate agent here in Las Vegas for 13 years as well, and so, I kind of, I know the ups and downs of, of, of how the market works. And I, I do welcome them into the neighborhood. I would just, with looking at that third map, get a closer look at it to see kind of what the specific lot sizes are. As close to 6,000 square foot as we can get, I would be 100% backer on, on their application. I'm not in favor of the open space. There are surrounding schools, Mojave High School and an elementary school in Alizondo right there, right around the corner. And there's a lot of high school students that wander through that field now, and I think if there's an open space such as a park, you're going to get a lot of gathering there. So, I would propose getting rid of the open space and then just opening those lots up to a little bit bigger size. That's just my thought. The builders are going to, I guess, kind of do what they're going to do. I, I'd like to have another neighborhood meeting as well, to kind of maybe hammer out some, some fine details. And, but I think they're in the, in the right direction, and I do greatly appreciate the fact that they're wanting to come in and, and help us out with home values and, and try and improve the area.
Well, thank you very much for that good report. Anybody else would like to come forward on item 11 or 12, please come now. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Councilman Churchill, this is in your, your area. On item 11, what would be your wish?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Let me thank the gentleman for taking his time to come to those previous meetings and coming to the council meeting tonight. Also, Bob, I know we spoke at length yesterday, I think it was, at the 12th hour, 11th hour, and I appreciate yourself and Todd, your client, for working with us to, to accommodate the concerns and questions of the surrounding neighborhood over there. It was my concern, of course, at the time, and still is, that, you know, we listen to our residents, but also to understand that, you know, we have an obligation to these builders over here to, to develop those infill lots, but to do it properly as well. So, once again, for the record, I do appreciate you stepping up and working with us on this. So, I don't know if we have any other comments from, from council here?
Do you have any other comments? You ready for a motion, Councilman?
The only thing I'd like to say, actually, I didn't realize it was the same builder, but I can attest to the high quality of, of the product that, that this builder produces. I actually live in an American Premier Home, which is the project that was done before. And I'm very happy in my home, and I look forward to other, other neighborhoods being done by this, by this builder. I'm welcoming this project, and most definitely, I'm welcoming to further projects by the same builder.
Well, thank you very much, Councilman Churchill, again.
Well, with that, mayor, I'd like to make a motion to overturn the decision of the planning commission and approve item number 11, AMP-04-18.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Do we have a drum roll?
We have your motion. It's just our choices of, what we can display on the top there is approve, appeal, and overturn planning commission decision. And this is both for 11 and 12?
Are we voting for both of these items, or just for 11?
Did you just move for 11?
11.
Yeah, just for 11.
Okay.
Does that matter whose name is showing for the motion?
Yes, it should be councilman.
Would you just rather have a voice vote on this?
It takes several seconds to switch from one to the other. There it is. Here it goes.
Good. There you go. Thank you. Items approved. Moving on to item number 12. Councilman, do you have a motion for that item?
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion on item 12, but before, so if I may. I just want to commend the, the investor slash developer, the community, and the city for really taking a collaborative spirit on this, to hear the residence is the right thing to do, to be flexible, and make the adjustments to make it, you know, a good, a good situation for all parties involved. I will say, for the record, that I think having the open space is worth the risk. Honestly, in my opinion, it's critically important that we uphold having that open space in these small and medium communities. And, you know, I'm hopeful that it'll be a place used by the residents and the small children as a place to go and recreate and be together in their community. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's appeal and overturn the planning commission's action to deny the application.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Item is approved.
Thank you. And council, we will reach out to the community in going through our tenant map in the next 30 days.
Thank you very much. Item number 15.
Item 15, approve AMP-0518 Tropical Distribution Center for applicant Van Trust Real Estate to amend the master plan of streets and highways to remove a portion of Beasley Drive between Ann Road and El Campo Grande Avenue, APN 123-27-401-002.
Thank you. Ms. Gronauer, this is your client?
Yes, your honor, members of the council, for the record, Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing Van Trust. We appreciate your staff, Public Works, Traffic. Everybody's been great to work with on the development out in Councilman Barone's area. As you recall, several months ago, we came before you to vacate another street, and today, you have Amazon that's there. You'll have another announcement coming through based off of what we're doing here tonight. So, there's a lot of fun and exciting things. And I know Steve's here from Van Trust, and I'm going to say it on his behalf also, we're so grate, grateful that you're, you have a great vision here to see what needs to get done, so we can bring in businesses like this. So, there's a lot of great things happening out up there, up by the Speedway area, and we thank you. And this is just another part of a lot of good news that will be coming here in the near future.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody from the audience that would like to come forward during public comment on item number 15, please come forward now. Seeing none, none, we'll close the public comment period. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Yeah, mayor, thank you very much. I think this is another fantastic paving stone in the road moving forward, not just for the city, but the entire valley. Van Trust is one of these companies that, when they come in, they do what they say, and they do it on time. And it's, I can't command them in, in stronger language. And I'd very much like to make a motion to approve this.
Thank you, council. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Item is approved.
Item 16, approve AMP-0618 Tropical and Land Commercial for applicant Dumani Holdings LLC, care of Dominique Dumani, to amend the comprehensive plan to change the land use from multifamily to community commercial on property located at the northwest corner of Tropical Parkway and Lamb Boulevard, APNs 123, 3601, 13, 14, and 15.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, welcome.
Thank you, mayor. Members of the council, George Garcia, 1055 Suite 210 Whitney Ranch Drive, Henderson, Nevada. This is a, an exciting, continuing the trend from last time, where we put 50 acres of commercial. We now bringing, for, on behalf of the Dumani Holdings, another 30-acre commercial project and taking out apartments over there on Lamb and Tropical. Appreciate Councilman Barone attending the meeting with the neighbors, and appreciate staff's efforts in reviewing and recommending approval with this, along with the planning commission. And we're looking forward to bringing a great new shopping center into that area to not only support all the residents that are there, who are, they're excited, but then we have another residential product, project to the north that's going on. And then, more importantly, I guess, is kind of a little different twist, is we have all the employees out there that are coming into those industrial areas, like Amazon and Fanatics that are right there. Those employees need places to go eat, get services, gas, gifts for their, for the wives and family, and this is going to be an opportunity to give them a place to go as well. So, with that, mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions and certainly look forward to your support. Related to this item is item, as the ordinance item number Agenda 38.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to address the council on this item? Seeing no one to come forward, we'll close the public comment period. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion. If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, again, this one goes back a few years. I remember not that long ago, of course, other residents were not that happy because originally there was a zone for high density residential. People do need a place to, to live, and of course, we do know that affordable housing in our community is, is short supply. But one thing that we desperately need is, is also more commercial. They'll bring value to, to our city. And again, as a person, like, I guess, we're neighbors there, Mayor. We live right down the street from this. We are acutely aware of just how short a supply places are to shop and to eat. And this is gonna be a fabulous addition. And I promise I'm not gonna make any snarky comments about if it's happening in war, in North Las Vegas, happening in Ward 1. I promise I'm not gonna say that. But I'd very much like to say that I, I'd like to make the motion to approve this.
We have a motion, Council. Any other comments, questions? If not, please vote. Items approved. Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Item 17, approve FDP-0518 Circle K for applicant Land Development Consultants LLC for a final development plan in an MUD MX-2 mixed-use development district to develop convenience store, food store, with gas pumps on property located approximately 240 feet west of the southwest corner of Craig Road and Allen Lane, APN 139, 06714, 004.
Thank you. Ms. Lazovich, welcome this evening.
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. We appreciate both staff and the Planning Commission recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, that was kinda cut and dry. Any comments or questions? I guess, nothing sexy about a Circle K, so, except you, Jennifer. Anybody from the audience that'd like to address the City Council on this item in the open comment period? Seeing none, we'll close the open comment period. Counsel, the chair will take a motion if there's any comments or questions.
I'd like to, before I make the motion, Mayor, I'd like to say that I applaud the applicant for the level of sensitivity to the surrounding area with the apartment complex to the south. If you notice from, if you recall from the earlier presentation, the orientation of the, the pumps away from that property closer to the high-traffic roadway of Craig Road creates a natural buffer for noise. There already is a plentiful amount of noise on Craig Road, and I think anything that might come from Circle K will certainly blend in with the existing noise. I just applaud your sensitivity to the area and orienting the, the configuration of the, of the prop, of the project. And with that, I'd like to move to approve item number 17.
We have a motion, Council. Please cast your vote. Item is approved.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Lazovich?
Item 18, ratify the International Association of Firefighters Local 1607 Non-Supervisor Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Juden?
Mayor and Council, items 18, 19, and 20, I'll, I'll just provide a little narrative for kind of all of them, and then I'll speak individual on each item as it comes up. So as you recall, whenever I was appointed to Acting City Manager, one of the things that was a goal that we set out was to, to resolve some of these issues. At the time, our IFF was that, our fire union was in arbitration, and after months of negotiations, it hadn't gone anywhere. So that was the first one that we worked on. But prior to that, as, as we've mentioned before, and during the budget item before this body, prior to that, we met under, under 288, we're allowed to, to get together with Mayor and Council to discuss union issues. And during that closed session, we discussed the importance of having a fiscal approach to all of our bargaining groups. And so with your guidance, and it was one of the things that Councilman Black talked about, was invest and reinvest, we identified the, the importance of making sure that as we continue to, to turn the corner as a city, that we were able to have the funds that are necessary to invest in, in new employees. And in order to do that, it required us to work with our, our bargaining groups, with our employee unions, to help them understand the importance of, yes, while we want to reinvest in our existing employees and thank them for their work, help them advance in their careers, and help keep pace with other entities. At the same time, we wanted them to appreciate and, and recognize the necessity of us being able to grow. Our staff has, has been cut in half from the recession, and there was a need to make sure that we had the funds that were adequate to support growth in areas where we, we needed critical hires. And so these contracts are two examples, well, it's technically three contracts, a supervisor's contract with fire, but these contracts are examples of our work, collective work with our, our bargaining groups, and understanding the importance of investing and reinvesting. So item 18 specifically, this is a three-year, the duration of this contract is three years. The fiscal impact to, to the city is, is $1,892,700. It includes a cost of living allowance increase in it. For the first year of the three-year contract, it's held steady at 0%. For years two and three respectively, it is, is a 2% increase. That generally is kinda the high-level look at the fiscal impact of this. I wanna thank IFF President Craig Romi and his board for their efforts. I know that it was, you know, kind of a hurry up and let's see if we can figure something out. As soon as I was appointed and we started, we got back to the table and, and worked with them, and I appreciate their efforts to do that, after them having worked with the city for a year, for them to, to agree to come back to the table and discuss how we could bring this thing out of arbitration. Because one of the issues you have with arbitrations, it's costly. It's costly for the city to do it and for us to, to come together and have a meeting of the minds that appreciated the need for us to be able to provide for our existing employees while also being able to increase services to residents by hiring more employees. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, thank you. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on the side of Mr. Romi? Would you please come up? Craig, I really know that you've worked very hard on this, and probably coming up here after all that hard work is just, I hope, a good experience for all your efforts. I was telling you earlier in, in the meeting that the other leaders understand other leaders and respect other leaders, and the leadership role that you've taken with not just this year, but where we've come for the last five years, is recognized in your ability to come to the table and work very hell, well to help North Las Vegas get out of the, the situation it has been in for the last eight, eight to 10 years, you know? So I just wanted to thank you personally and to please take it back to your firefighters, those people that believed in us and worked with us and helped us get through the toughest of times when I first got elected mayor, that we're now seeing the fruits of that relationship come around, that North Las Vegas is, once again, moving in the right direction as one team. And through your leadership and your organization to meet with us and to work through, I know there's some rocky times here where everybody just stepped away from the table, you know, and to have you be able to get back to the table sometimes, probably took a lot of error from your part, and we appreciate you for that. So I personally, I'm gonna ask this council to say something if they feel like it, wanna thank you for leadership, and I continue to wanna work with you. I appreciate you, and would you like to offer something or just let us praise you?
Well, on behalf of my board and myself, thank you for the kind words. When Ryan took over in January, we were able to sort of turn over a new page and get things moving in the right direction again. And it wasn't but eight weeks after he was, we sat down and started working on things that we realized we'd be able to avoid arbitration and the costly things that that entail. And so we appreciate the efforts that he put forward to get this finished.
I think both your learning, learning curves is very quick. You guys were excellent.
It's a little steep sometimes.
Great teammates. Counsel, any other comments or questions before I take a vote on this?
Yeah, Mayor, I wanna thank actually our, our bargaining team and of course, our friends there and the firefighters. I know I have a couple colleagues who've also gone on ride-alongs. We've seen our, our firefighters' bravery firsthand. We know exactly what you, which your members, what, what they mean to our city. You guys are the ones that come running to the situation when everyone else is running away. You have an emergency, you guys are the ones who, who come, you know? And, and I have, I have a great picture over here on, on my iPad. One of your members, who not that far away from here, was falling through a ceiling, you know, over here on Cheyenne, at Chey, at Cheyenne and Civic Center, literally putting their life on the line, you know, to, to protect property sometimes, but definitely to protect our, our, our residents. Of course, you know, we're not offering a whole lot of money, but it's something that your members can, can work with, can live with, something that we can sustain. And I, I wanna thank that instead of coming in, in an adversarial kinda thing, you worked with us. That means a lot to me personally, and I, I know my residents will, will be benefiting for years to come from this, from this deal. And I, I can't thank you, from the bottom of my heart, I just wanna thank you and your members again for, for being there whenever our city's in need, and I, I hope to be there, and I hope the city's there for when you're, you and your members are in a time of need as well. Thank you so very much.
Councilman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, I think you know how I feel about you guys and girls. I appreciate the, the time, the effort to work with, with Ryan and our team over here because in, in a very large way, we are all a family working together, and that's something that unfortunately has been missing in the past. So I'm very happy to say that I see it coming back and to let you know that, that we'll be here, I'll be here for you for any issue. Again, share, share our feelings and appreciation with, with Joe and the rest of the team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wenz Brown?
And I'd just like to say thank you for your leadership, to put a dollar value on what you all do on a daily basis. It's nearly impossible, but we appreciate and know the hard work that you do for, to keep our citizens safe on a daily basis. And being the leaders, it's a tough, it's a tough situation, but you're a great leader, you're an awesome leader, and thanks for sharing in the vision that we are moving our city and our council towards. So I appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Romi, I'd just like to also echo, you're, you're a great leader. In the short time I've had the privilege of talking to you and discussing, three words come to mind, you're very candid, you're very consistent, and you have a collaborative nature and a steadiness about your leadership, and I respect that and look forward to working with you even more in the future.
Thank you for, myself and my board, counsel.
Thank you very much. So at this time, the chair will take a motion on item 18 to ratify the firefighter's local agreement, collective bargaining agreement?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Thank you very much.
Item 19, ratify the International Association of Firefighters Local 1607 Supervisor Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
Thank you. So the public will recognize, the first one with Mr. Romi was the non-supervisor, those were the firefighters, these are the small group of supervisors that work, the chiefs and that, that work within the organizations. So would anybody like to come up and speak on it? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor and Council, I just legally, per interest, need to give a couple little points.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine, Mayor. First, this also is a, a three-year contract. The COLA impact is similar. It's in, first year it's a zero, second year it's 2%, and third year it's 2%. Total fis, fiscal impact of the contract is $139,000, $139,400. I did just, as, I know you're getting ready to move to a, a quick vote on this, wanna make sure that, I thank HR, Cass Palmer, for his efforts on this, as well as Finance and their efforts. Chief Calhoun, who was kinda dropped into the middle of this, it was, it was advantageous for myself to be able to rely on him as kind of also a new guy on the block to, to bring this around. And in particular, Amanda Dillard, who wears many hats, and one of the hats that she wears is she provides staff support for these negotiations, and she's done a tremendous job of aligning and working with these contracts, as well as the legal team. Specifically, Claudia in the legal department was as, as tremendous as we worked through these contracts, both her knowledge and her ability to advise management as we move through this. I just wanted to make sure I thanked them. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Romi, if you send our praise, also to those men and women on their contract, how much we respect and care for them too. So any other questions? Not the chair will take a motion?
Mayor, did you ask for a public comment?
No, I didn't. Do we have anybody? I did, I, at the beginning, if they would come forward, then I asked Mr. Romi to come first. Nobody else came, we'll close public comment. Good point. With that, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion on item 19. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 20, ratify memorandum of understanding amending the Teamsters Supervisor, Non-Supervisor and Administrative Agreements dated July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2018, so as to extend the agreements one year through June 30, 2019, provide for a 2% base wage increase effective July 1, 2018, and increase the monthly medical insurance contribution by $46 monthly per member.
Thank you very much. Ms. Griffith, would you please come forward for a second? I know that the, the leadership team for the local is, is at a seminar right now. I talked to them on the phone today, but we'd like to maybe give you a chance to come up and say, and then anyone else would like to speak on this item, please come after Mrs. Griffith. This is public hearing time.
Well, actually, I am part of the leadership also. I'm part of the executive board at Local 14, so I come on behalf of all of them because, as I stated before, they're in California, a seminar. But a little brief history on me, like I say, I'm an executive board member, office manager, and I've been a longtime Teamsters member for 32 years. So I'm here today to ask for your support and approval of the extension of, of the three collective bargaining agreements between the city of North Las Vegas and Teamsters Local 14. These extensions were approved by 91% of our voting members. We would like to recognize the leadership again of Mr. Judas, Acting City Manager, whose efforts have made this very possible for us. These extensions include a base wage for all covered employees for the first time in 10 years. Additionally, we acknowledge and support the city's efforts to balance rewarding current employees and adding additional staff to address the growing demands on the city's services. So we look forward to working with the city as the local economy continues, to grow and recover from the great recession that we had. Again, we ask for your approval of these extensions and appreciate our relationship with the council. Thank you.
Mr. Juden?
Yes, sir, Mayor. So, once again, this is another example. Teamsters quickly, kind of after talking with them about the mayor and council's desire to, to keep steady at, at 2%, I, I wanna thank Teamsters for, for doing what Teamsters have a tradition of doing in the city of North Las Vegas, is they quickly stepped up and said, you know, how, how can we, how can we work on this? These are a couple of things that we've got, these are some issues that we have, and we, we were able to, to really work through the process quickly with them. I think it's a testament to their knowledge of the process, as well as the relationship that, that they have with management, as, as well as you all. I wanna thank Larry Griffith and Fred Horvath for their outstanding work and their, their board and their team's work in working on this. This is a one-year extension of the existing contract with, with Teamsters. It has a total fiscal impact of $1,252,800. It is essentially a 2% COLA increase is where the majority of that impact comes from. The rest of the impact comes from a contribution, increasing the monthly contribution of the city to their health trust, and that's essentially a high-level view of the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. So I'd like to just state that Mr. Griffith is, your leader is probably my closest business partner. I think 75% of the people that work for this city are, recognize you and, and your board as the leadership team. We could not run this city without one voice, with one, one person to talk to, one person to discuss the issues with. And it has been amazing to see that this relationship has worked over the last five years so well, through the roughest times. And to have that voice of reason, when we need to visit with him or he needs to visit with us to be able to work together and to solve the problems and grow the city together. We're very excited about this relationship, and we are adding more and more employees to cover the needs from the growth of the city, which would be more and more prospective people that we hope you will represent and allow us to continue to lead the city forward from the resident point of view into the future. So thank you so much for everything that your leadership team does. And with that, I'll, I'll ask the council if they have anything to say.
Okay, Mayor, thank you very much. I thank you and every one of us here on the City Council. We can easily go and count who
We can easily go and count who are the people, you know, that make things run for our residents. I, I think of one department, of course, that I, that I, I give a lot of kudos to are, of course, my friends there in, in code enforcement. I have to be careful, you know, like you have lots of kids that you give praise to, right? The, the beautification guys and women, the, the people there in graffiti, the people there in code enforcement. Oftentimes, they're, they're people who I turn to, to give service, of course, you know, to, to my residents right here in the downtown area. Again, you know, we're talking about everyday heroes, heroes that think come in, in lots of different walks. We have our boys in blue, the thin blue line that provide so much service and protection for our, our city. We have the guys who ride the shiny red fire trucks, right? Well, they're, they're fantastic people. But we have the, again, the everyday heroes that make the city work, a day-to-day thing. The ones that greet our residents and, and take their payments, the ones who meet them and allow them to run their business. The people who work in the water department to make sure that, you know, you can just turn the water on and brush your teeth, right? They're, as you said, they're the bulk of, of our employees here who work for the city. And again, for so many years, they did, they had to tighten their belts and, and go without. And we recognize that they have families too, and I'm very happy that, working together with them, that now we can, of course, you know, help them, help their own families out. And I want to thank all of our Teamsters for being patient with us and, and staying in the course. And, you know, they, they took a hit for the team. And it gives me a lot of pleasure that we can actually provide this. Whenever it's time, I know I'd like to make the motion to, to accept this, but I know other people want to say something too as well.
Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say hello to Lynn, it's been a while since I've seen you. I want to thank you so much, yourself as a board member and the board, and of course, all of your members for your longtime willingness to always step up and help the city. It's been a long-time tradition with the Teamsters to do that, and it's a privilege for me to have worked with you and continue to work with you. So give my regards to Larry and the team over there, and once again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Greens Brown?
Thank you. And I'd just like to echo my colleagues over here, but say thank you to you and, and the board members, because you guys are an integral part of our city. You're like the nuts and bolts. We could not survive without the Teamsters Union. So again, just thank you, and being patient, absolutely.
Your councilman Black.
Yes, North Las Vegas has an amazing team of employees, and I witnessed this firsthand and, and have a really great appreciation and perspective with the Silver Mesa Recreation Center expansion. We took it in-house, many departments, public works, parks, utilities, everyone came together. That just really demonstrated to me the caliber, the high caliber of employees that we have. And the number of those that are represented by the Teamsters are an amazing group of individuals that do a good job.
Thank you. So one more time, anybody else that'd like to address the, address the council, please go forward. If not, we'll close public comment, public comment is now closed. Counsel, Councilman Church, I mean, Barone, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to business.
Item 21, approve inter-local agreement with the Clark County School District for the conversion and exchange of Hartkey Park to build a new J.D. Smith Middle School and a new Hartkey Park.
Thank you. I don't see, we don't have a presentation this evening, Councilman Barone?
Yeah, Mayor, I know we've been talking quite a bit, and of course, I, I have a couple of friends from the school district. We're very, very close actually to, to wrapping this up, but I, I would rather, I, I think we need a little bit more time, but I don't want to say, let's come back in two weeks. It sounds kind of scary, I'd rather ask for like, for like, three months. Not that we're going to take three months, I think this is going to wrap up a lot faster than that. We just have a couple of points that we need to finally get done. And I was wondering if, if we can move it maybe and give it three months, in recognition though, that we're, we're probably going to do this a lot faster than that.
Councilman, it might be easier if we were to table the item, that way we don't have a specific time. So if it's wrapped up in a couple of weeks, it could come back in a couple of weeks. If it takes longer than, than a couple of months, we can do it then. So staff would recommend that, that maybe you make a motion to table the item.
I'd like to make a motion to table them, Mayor.
Any other comments or questions?
And I'd like to also thank our friends from the school district for, for, for coming. Can, can we recognize them?
Sure you can.
Of course, we, we have our, our friends from the school district. Actually, excuse me? Yeah, Linda Perry, and I'm so sorry, I forgot, I'm terrible with names. You know, I've been a teacher for like 23 years, I'm no better today than when I first started. What's his name, Mayor? I, I forgot his name. Well, anyhow, Linda, what's your colleague's name? Mr. Wentz, yeah, and again, thank you very much for coming down, we really do appreciate. And I do a promise, we, we have a little plan to do some more things here in the near future that will actually open up new lines of communication between the city council and our good friends in the school district, who again, they serve, well, I do it too, I guess, I work for the school district, but they serve the children from North Las Vegas. And with that, I'd like to table this.
Please cast your vote. So the item to table, item 21 is approved.
Item 22, appoint Ryan Juden as a city manager and prove employment agreement. Mayor, I have to read into the record some changes that are for the agreement that was attached and posted online. So the, we want to amend the proposed contract by interliniation as follows. Change one would be to replace references to deferred compensation in section 5.2 on page 5 with deferred and/or defined compensation plan or plans. Change two would be to add the following language after section 2.6 on page 2 as a new section 2.7. So 2.7, residency, employee may reside outside the City of North Las Vegas while employed as city manager under this agreement. Those are the changes.
Thank you very much. So we are to the point now of discussing our city manager, whether we go out for a local search, a national search, or, or hire from within. So at this point in time, it's time that we discuss this. So I'll ask the council to start, Councilman Barone, where are you at?
I'll turn this thing off, thank you very much, Mayor. Well, you know, again, speaking of our friends, you know, in the school district, well, you know, I, I think we're, we should take a hint here from our, from our, our friends over in the school district, they've just conducted a very expensive national search. And after they narrowed it down to four people, it turns out none of them were internal. And then, well, it turns out they've gone ahead and opened it up again, and now they have internal candidates. The way I see this, Mayor, quite frankly, I look at this as, as momentum. Right now, we have momentum on our side. We have momentum on our side. The city is right now in a much different place than we were four and, and five years ago, than when we came on. You know, when you're typically, when you're hiring for position, you know, you take resumes, you call people in, and, well, you, you have to take people at their work. And you don't know what you've got until they've actually started doing the job. But, well, if that's the case, in this case, we have, of course, I've been calling him the interim, the ICM, right? Well, he's actually been doing the job now for the, for over a quarter, for a little over a quarter. It's kind of like you'd say, he's like, he's had his test run, we've been test-driving him, I guess you could say. And what has he given us in return? Well, let's, let's talk about this, you know. Here, just a little bit later on in this agenda, we're going to be voting on an oversized item. And which one will be providing water that's actually going to help define the future of not just North Las Vegas, but in the entire valley. Quite frankly, you know, Ryan was at the, was very much an integral part of that. He's been the guy driving the, the team there. On top of that, and here's a big one, for those of you who like fiscal matters, for the first time since the Great Recession, we have a balanced, funded budget for the city. Now, there's people back in Wall Street, of course, who have been keeping a keen eye on what we're doing here, on, as you like to say, this several billion-dollar business. And speaking of our Wall Street fellows, they've just jumped our credit rating, not one, but two notches. Again, that's a, a big thing for us. What else? Well, I, I don't think the public knows about this, but I'll, I'll go ahead and say this, this really brought it to me, ma, ma, made it for me very real. Recently, of course, the directors, under the leadership of Mr. Juden, they all got together because we need to hire some more people to make our city run a little bit, to function a lot better. And normally, these things are kind of like a deal where you have directors who are kind of like competing. They're, they're, again, adversaries advocating for some very scarce resources, hiring people. But instead of having them like compete and vie against each other, the city manager brought them together and in a collegial fashion, in a collaborative fashion, that's one of those big words for everybody, right? In a collaborative fashion, they worked together and helped each other decide what the entire city needed. That's a big deal. I mean, that's a, a pretty good mark of leadership right there. What else? Well, because of all the hard work, we just landed a fantastic, I mean, I, I think other cities would be actually probably having praised in the street. We have a 2.4, several hundred, several million, probably a $100 million project, Amazon, coming to North Las Vegas. They're coming here because they like our team, that we offer something to them. On top of that, as our friends from the union, we've wrapped up union negotiations in a collaborative manner, in pretty quick. I mean, it seems sometimes that in, in the past, we, these union negotiations used to go on forever and forever, and sometimes they weren't always so nice. But we've managed to go ahead and forge new partnerships with the people who serve our city. Again, I, I think these are all very positive signs, and much of it has to do with, with Ryan Juden's leadership on this. I'll tell you what, maybe he's got a long way to go still, I don't know. How, how high is his trajectory? I'm not sure, but I think, in, in the same way that the city is moving in the same, in the right direction. I think we're moving in the right direction with a person who's shown that he has vision, that he has a different style that I think that seems to, at this point, be meshing well with, with the, the leaders of the city here at hand. And I know I would very much would be in favor of making this permanent and appointing him our, our city manager.
Councilman Black?
Yes, you know, as I've been considering this, this is a significant decision that we're making tonight, one that I don't take lightly. You know, this is a, a person that, that leads our, our large staff and has accountability for the large budget that we have. You know, clearly, we can look outside, I'm a proponent of promoting from within when it makes sense, when you have the right people in place to, to take these leadership roles. And when I think of Mr. Juden, you know, what we have is a really unique set of circumstances here. When you compare what we have to perhaps City of Henderson, for example, they have a city manager with three assistants that have very specific roles, and they're kind of siloed to a degree, meaning they have finite responsibilities and they become experts in a limited number of things. In our case, over the last years, we haven't had that luxury of having multiple assistant city managers. So what we have had is one person who had, just out of necessity, needed to cross-train and to understand what's going on where and what's going on throughout the organization as a whole. And I believe Mr. Juden has, has taken those cross-training opportunities deliberately, as well as just by virtue of necessity and with, with only having one assistant city manager. So I think he is uniquely qualified due to that opportunity of cross-training within our organization. He has a depth of institutional knowledge, relationships within the city, as well as outside the city, that are very relevant and very important. So that's my thought, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. I always like following somebody, because I know that particularly after my councilman friend on my left, his, his dialogue will more than likely cover everything I was going to say anyway. But, so to be very brief, the most important thing that I look at in, in any appointment, in any promotion, including Mr. Juden here, is the ability to have the, the trust and working relationship of the directors and the employees. That, that's key, that, that's really key to me. And, you know, he's been part of this organization since 13 in that respect, but we've had other people at the helm over here working hard to, to get us out of the hole that we were in. And I know Darren's over there, and I'll give you the high five, but I, I don't know if we've cleared the mountain yet, but I think we're pretty much clearing the trees. So I'm very comfortable with, with my discussions with Ryan over the past several days. And just from what I'm seeing, as Councilman Barone had mentioned, we have amazing items on this agenda tonight. Very, very important items, no less important than this particular item over here, in many ways, much more important. So I think we have to look at it in, in the perspective that it should be viewed. And I agree, I think you're doing a good job. I feel that, you know, you will be doing a good job, and I know that we have a good relationship working and a very open relationship, which is very important to me. So I'm very comfortable with, with yourself being appointed city manager, my friend.
Councilman Greens, one more, Ms. Greens Brown?
Thank you. Well, you know, I've been pondering over this decision. Ryan, to me, you're, you're that person that I would aspire to be if I were a city manager. Our conversations are candid, questions are answered. If you don't have the answer, you get it to me immediately, which I truly appreciate. But it's just nice to be able to sit down and have a conversation about what's best for the City of North Las Vegas, and we are moving like lightning, and it just feels good. It feels good to walk in the building, people are relaxed, people are comfortable, people are happy, people are willing to go that extra step that it takes to keep the city moving forward. And so I appreciate the work that you're doing, and I think you're, you are, as, as an acting city manager, a great leader, but as our city manager, I am in support of, of that decision, and I think you will be a tremendous leader as moving us forward.
Thank you very much. So with that, the chair will take a motion. Councilman Barone, did you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ryan Juden as our permanent city manager.
Thank you, we have a motion.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended, thank you. Items approved. Now, in the audience, we have Debbie Juden, his wife, and her three or four children. And we'd like to take a five-minute break, five, five children, it's been a long night, five children, and take a break just for a couple of minutes, and come out and shake your hand, Ryan, would you mind if we did that? Let's, let's take a five-minute break, thank you. Thank you. Where did we lose control of this meeting? Oh, yeah, Ryan Juden, congratulations, Mr. City Manager.
23.
Madam City, Madam, here, clerk?
Item 23, approve the villages at Tulley Springs Exaction Reimbursement Agreement between the City of North Las Vegas and KBSOR Park Highlands TRS LLC Master Developer for the disbursement of funds to master developer that were provided to the city by a developer in the villages at Tulley Springs Master Plan Community.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? I see no one coming forward on this one, we'll close the public comment. Any comments or questions, please, please give me a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 24, approve augmentation to the Land Development and Community Services Code Enforcement Division's FY 2017-18 Budget in the amount of $75,000 for abatement activities.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Now, my code enforcement guys have more ammunition. Sorry, Mayor.
Item 25, approve inter-local agreement with the Clark County to allow for the transfer of $2,903,261.78 in unspent community development block grant funds from Clark County to the City of North Las Vegas for current and ongoing activities. Authorize acting city manager or his designee to enter into appropriate agreements of approved projects as required, and authorize staff to administratively approve any revised final funding allocation.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
I'd like to move to approve item 25.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 26, approve allocation of City of North Las Vegas Home Investment Partnerships Program and Low-Income Housing Trust Fund Grant Funding in the amount of $1,200,000, and authorize acting city manager or his design, excuse me, city manager or his designee to enter in appropriate agreements and/or designee, to enter in appropriate agreements and/or amendments for approved projects and programs as required.
Thank you. Do you have any presentation on this?
Do you want one?
Good evening.
We, there's no formal presentation, but staff is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, well, that's perfect then, just making sure, thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
I don't have a, well, I do have a question. Is this the Nevada Ham project off of North Fifth and?
Yes, one of the activities that's funded is the North Fifth Project.
Okay, great.
It's Nevada Ham.
Right, Nevada Ham, right. Well, with that, Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much, we have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item twenty-seven, approve Citizens Advisory Committee recommendation for the projected allocation of $276,985 in FY 2018-2019, community development block grant, public services grant funding. Authorize city manager or his designee to enter into appropriate agreements of approved programs and projects as required, and authorize staff to administratively approve any revised final funding allocations.
Thank you. Dr. Lexum, thank you for being here this evening.
Not a problem. I just want to give a brief overview of the process this year. I'm Leonie Letson, I am the Neighborhood Services Coordinator. I have the primary responsibility of the oversight for the community development block grant program, as well as the emergency solutions grant program, which are the two items that you have before you on twenty-seven and twenty-eight. We started our application process in September, and we ended March 6th. During that timeframe, we had the bus tour, which was on January 13th, and we had the pleasure of having two council members join us during that time. During the bus tour, what we do is go visit the sites where the applicants reside, where they have their administrative offices, and also where they provide services to the community. It gives the committee, the Citizens Advisory Committee, a good overview of where the services are being provided, as well as how the project interacts with the community. And I also want to give special acknowledgement to the Citizens Advisory Committee. I know kind of the Citizens Advisory Committee Chair kind of stole my thunder in the beginning, but that's okay. I still want to acknowledge him because he did some special things this year. So our Chair is Doug Dobine. He was also responsible for getting us a bus for our bus tour in kind, so we always want to acknowledge that. This is the second year in a row doing that, so that deserves tremendous accolades, it saved the city some money. We also have our resident historian, who is our Vice Chair, Jeff Albert, and our members Gil Lopez, Rayanne Peterson, J.D. Thornton, Tracy Lewis, and last but not least, certainly not least, Joe Cato. We had approximately thirteen applications submitted, and we had thirteen that come before you for recommendation. We had five new projects and eight returning projects. Some of the new projects consist of the, two projects from the Gay and Lesbian Community Center, one from the Financial Guidance Center, one from the Foundation for Positively Kids, and one for volunteers in medicine. And I will entertain any questions if you have them at this time.
Thank you very much. First off, I apologize for not making the bus tour this year. I know I've made it in the past, but something that happened.
Yes, and I did want to acknowledge that as well, you've attended in the past, so.
I was duly reprimanded through other people, so just, you know.
I was going to acknowledge the fact that you've attended, believe me.
Thank you very much. Doug, just so you would know, I've been on that tour before, but you weren't there that year, so I made it. But at this point in time, is there any questions for Dr. Lexum? If not, we have.
Just a quick comment. I wanted to, again, acknowledge all the hard work that the Citizens Advisory Council did, and I'm actually pleasantly surprised that a couple of the projects were picked. As an educator, I happen to work with a little bit of older kids, right? And in working with students at Rancho High School, and being Latino, there's a special bit of, there's some very special considerations being Latino and being gay, lesbian. It's a special issue in our, in our community, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for these students who I know, sometimes they have special considerations in their families and in their community. So I, again, I thank you very much for all your hard work and bright services for the kids, especially the kids that I serve at Rancho High School.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Goyens Brown?
And I was just so glad that I did go on the tour because just to know the amount of resources that are out there in our city is amazing, that services that are offered and provided to residents that need those services. And the tour ran super smooth, it was very, very organized, and we had a very eventful, but very eye-opening, educating day, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you as well, and I feel like a bad boy over here, I could sit in the corner somewhere. I did have my list, my name on the list to go on the bus tour, but something came up at the last minute, so I do apologize. I'll go on two next year, okay?
Would you like to make the motion? But the motion, we to approve the CAC recommended CBDG grant funding and authorize staff to finalize the allocations.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, please cast your vote.
Wasn't about to repeat that.
Items approved, thank you very much.
Item twenty-eight, approve Citizens Advisory Committee recommendation for the projected allocation of $168,153 in FY 2018-2019, emergency solutions grant funding. Authorize acting city manager or his designee to enter into appropriate agreements of approved programs and projects as required, and authorize staff to administratively approve any revised final funding allocations.
Thank you very much. Was there a presentation with this one, or we're just going to go to vote? Okay. Counselor, if there are anybody in the public that would like to speak on this one, seen, and we'll close a public comment. Counselor, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item twenty-nine, approve an acknowledgement, acceptance, and modification disposition and development agreement, and consent to transfer ownership and associated subordination agreement for the acquisition and rehabilitation of the Affordable Senior Rental Housing Project, Owen Senior Apartments, located at 1626 David Place.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayors, I understand this will help bring some affordable housing for seniors for the next thirty years, and if I'm correct on that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item thirty, approve settlement of condemnation litigation with defendant claimants, Fifth and Brooks LLC, American Classic Motors LLC, Arnold Clark, Robert Ford, Luis Monteloni, and Wallop Development LLC, hereinafter defendant claimants, in the amount of $2,255,000 for the partial acquisition of real property, permanent easement, and a temporary construction easement generally located at the southwest corner of North Fifth Street and Brooks Avenue, APM 13915603002, in connection with the North Fifth Street Phase 1D project from I-15 to Shine Avenue, and authorize the city attorney to execute and file the stipulation and order for settlement and release of all claims and all ancillary documents to settle the litigation.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Would you state your name for the record and your address?
Good evening, my name is Stephen Silva, I'm outside counsel for the City of North Las Vegas. My address is 300 South Fourth Street, Suite 1400, Las Vegas, Nevada. My name is Steve Silva with Fenimore Craig Attorneys. We are your outside counsel on this matter. We come here primarily to answer any questions you may have. This has been a rather lengthy, six-year process. What looked at the outset to be a simple acquisition, partial acquisition of property to widen and improve a road, uncovered some very complicated factual and legal issues concerning this parcel. There were multiple development agreements between the landowners, some of which had partially come to fruition, some of which had been frustrated due to economic realities during the downturn. There had been a proposed tow yard that had been before. This council had been rejected, had been litigated all the way up through the Nevada Supreme Court. Aspects of that prior litigation re-raised their heads in this action, and there had been prior litigation concerning this project on unrelated parcels that had some aspects bleed over into this litigation as well. So after a long, multi-year, multi-court effort, we are in a position where all of the parties are comfortable with the numbers being dealt with. We are here to recommend and support this settlement, and I am here to answer any questions that would not violate the attorney-client privilege. Certainly, any more in-depth questions can be handled through separate processes as well.
Thank you very much. We appreciate this, and we also appreciate that this property now is going to be, hopefully, developed, you know, and add to the income base of the city, and we appreciate your owners for doing that. We're actually telling people about this piece of property right now that could be for sale. So we're excited about seeing this get into a better taxable situation for the city. Thank you very much. Counselor, any other comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Item thirty-one, award bid number 1525, and approve City Facilities Water Treatment and Management Services Agreement with Western Water Technologies, Inc., in a total amount not to exceed $114,000, $22,800 annually for a three-year period, with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods to provide facility water treatment and management at various locations throughout the city.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item thirty-two, approve hydraulic tail trailer purchase agreement with Coastline Equipment in the amount of $73,710, utilizing the Clark County Nevada bid number 603921-15 for InterS332 Local Government Purchasing Act for the purchase of a Trail Ease TEATX TDD trailer for Public Works Department, CAP, project number PWR0, excuse me, RO1017.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item thirty-three, approve patch truck purchase agreement with Mechanus International Trucks, Inc., in an amount of $207,083, utilizing the Clark County Nevada bid number 60396916 for InterS332 Local Government Purchasing Act for purchase of an international 4400 patch truck for the Public Works Department, CFP, project number PWRO1017.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
I'd like to move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item thirty-four, approve oversizing agreement for public water with Solo Investments One LLC and N. Mesa 319 LLC for the oversizing of up to 53,700 lineal feet of water main and related improvements, and aperture instance with Apex Industrial Park.
Thank you. Mr. DeValle, were you going to come up and address the community, the city council on this? And Mr. Juden, thank you.
If I may, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Randy DeValle, Utilities Director for the city. Over the past four years, we have invested incredible energy, working on ways and developing options to provide water to the Apex Industrial Park area. Without water, literally, development is dead in the water up there. No pun intended. But, you know, Faraday Future then came on board, and we were excited, we thought we had a plan that could work. Faraday Future then left, but we were in a position at that point where, you know, we could not turn back, we had to find a way to get water. And to the credit of Mayor Lee, City Manager Juden, and Chief Financial Officer Darren Adair, they actually met with a developer who said, you know, hey, I need water up in lower part of Apex, up in Miners Mesa and Solo Mountain. And what I need is enough water to provide, and I will build an eight-inch diameter water line and system to get up to those sites. To their credit, they said, the mayor and city staff said, hey, you know, we can't let you just put in an eight-inch water line, we need a water line that will serve the entire Apex area, and that's going to cost quite a bit more, so would you consider an oversizing agreement? It went pretty quickly after that point because the oversizing agreement was negotiated, and we're at a point right now, the agreement calls for an investment from the city. We have a total that the city, that the council approved last month as part of the capital improvement plan of $42 million. Phase one of this project, which is nearly half of the water line system, which will consist of 24- and 36-inch diameter water main capable of pumping 6,000 gallons per minute, is estimated to cost $27.6 million, plus probably a good $10 million in electrical costs. But we do have monies available to do that, and this will be the first phase of what we hope will be a 13-mile-long water line. The future phases will be funded through an SID. With the SID, with the first half being funded through this oversizing agreement, we should be able to keep the assessment amounts down to a point that is more affordable for all of the property owners up in Apex. So it is our recommendation that city council approve this oversizing agreement.
Mr. Juden?
Mayor and council, I don't have a whole lot to add. I would say that the mayor pro tem said during item 22 that there are other items on the agenda that were possibly more important, and this definitely is that item. This is an item that staff's been working on for a long time, it's been almost two decades. There's been a problem out in Apex without a solution, and before this body today is a solution that is going to further our efforts in the city to grow ourselves out of the fiscal crisis that we inherited. It's, once again, an example of Gronomics, where we saw proof of concept where this worked whenever we did the SID out at the Speedway, and before that was, has even been completed building, we've had amazing projects, Amazon announced out there. There was an item on the agenda today that the listening public doesn't really know what the reason that there was a road that was moved, but it's because there's going to be a very large building there with a very exciting announcement that we're making in a few weeks on what's going to be going out there. So that demonstrated that when you bring utilities to an underserved area, it brings, it converts this land to valuable real estate, and it spurs economic development. We believe that this, bringing this first phase of water up through Apex is going to open up over 3,000 acres of land that will be immediately available, because what we're starting to hear from brokers and from other folks is, they're out of land to bring in these massive projects, they're running out of land, so we're now bringing more land online through this project. So there's a lot of things that, in the time I've been in the city, have come before this body, and I can say almost unequivocally that this is one of the more significant items for the future of North Las Vegas, and this is one of the most significant items that I believe many of you will vote on in your tenure on this board.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions that you might have concerning this oversizing water agreement?
Mayor, I'm, at my heart, I'm a social studies teacher, a history teacher. Where did Mr. Albert go? I mean, he's our resident North Las Vegas historian, maybe he's out there in the lobby or something, whatever. I guess, I've cited under people like noted historians here of the West and of sort of Nevada, such as Eugene Moore and Michael Green. One thing I've learned from them, the history of the West is the history of infrastructure, the history of roads, water, especially water infrastructure. Basically, build it, they'll come. I mean, it literally defines what we are out here in this side of the country. Again, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Watersar, again, this is not something, they need water there now, but again, I'm not trying to be like too dense here, but we have, there are projects that are coming that are going to be taking advantage of this in the not-so-near future. Isn't that correct?
That is correct. In fact, we received word this week that there is actually company that's probably paying attention to this vote right now, that would like to hook up as a customer on this line, and that's exactly the purpose of it, that's what we want to see happening out there.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Watersar.
Any other comments or questions, any counsel? Councilman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when I was on city council, '09 to '11, I remember the statement being made quite often from the dais that North Las Vegas is a proud bedroom community. I guess visually, that sounds very good, but the reality of it is, it isn't good. People get up in the morning, they go to business somewhere else in the valley, they People get up in the morning, they go to business somewhere else in the valley, they, they shop somewhere else in the valley, they eat somewhere else in the valley, and they, they come back here to go to sleep, and they start it all over again the next morning. This is going to be a major step forward for the city. I've always felt that business is the engine that makes the residents, give them the quality of life that they deserve, the provides housing, and it's all very, very interconnected. It's a perfect marriage. I'm looking forward to, to being part of this vote tonight because this, in very many ways, is a very historic vote for us here as a city, and I'm proud to be part of that. But I just have something that, I have a note over here, I just want to read verbatim, and I'll turn it over back to another council person. A 2016 report by the Urban Land Institute found that when fully developed, Apex will create twenty thousand direct jobs and fifty-six thousand indirect jobs for our residents. That's also in industries we haven't seen here in Southern Nevada outside of gaming, tourism, and hospitality that will diversify our state economy. That's really going to be the key going forward. We, we need more than a, a one-legged or maybe three-legged stool going into the future. So, I want to thank you all, and Darren's hard work, and everyone's hard work, and of course, all of our, our potential landowners and businesses out there. We're here to serve you. That's our job, to serve you. Thank you.
Any other comments, Councilman Black?
So, I know we're considering this for a vote this evening, but I was wondering if you could project or forecast out what a, the scope and nature and size of a end user might be in, in Apex, and also what the anticipated timeline of them becoming a reality might be.
So, that's somewhat difficult, but what I can say is that what Apex does do is it provides the potential that doesn't exist currently in the valley, is it provides large spaces of land that's away from residential communities where large businesses can come and move their operations. So, this is something that's not just unique in Southern Nevada. It, first of all, doesn't exist in Southern Nevada, but arguably, there's nothing like it in the Southwest, where you have this degree of, of land that's that close to an international airport, that that's close to world-class amenities. And one of the things that's commonly overlooked in Southern Nevada, a couple things. First of all, is our ability to induce workforce migration, so we can actually bring people here. So, sometimes when businesses come here, they don't have to be as concerned about where their workforce is going to come from within because of our ability to induce it externally. And that's, we're not Fargo. It's something that's, that's unique to, to Southern Nevada. Another thing, too, that Councilman Churchill said is the idea of a bedroom community. It sounds nice, but one of the things to remember is the funding mechanism for, in, in Nevada is, is the C-Tax formula. It's one of the ways that we receive some of our funding at the local level. And that formula actually penalizes bedroom communities. And that was one of the, the things that we've worked on over the last almost five years was transferring and, and, or basically worked on making sure that we brought in developments, and we specifically had activities that were focused on being rewarded by the revenues and the state revenue stream. So, bedroom community sounds great on paper, might sound great on a postcard, but the realities of it is it results in a net decrease in state funds, which is, would result in a decrease in services to residents. So, we, we've turned that formula on its head as we've gone out and looked for these different projects. So, while I can't say specifically what projects or when they'll come out there, what I can say is the type, which would be large magnitude projects that could not come anywhere else in Southern Nevada. In fact, that's the challenge we've always had with developing Apex is, the reality is, I don't, I'm not going to speculate on who, but the thought of having an industrial park in the South that competed against an industrial park in the North, which has gotten the bulk of the large developments that have come into Nevada, they didn't have another option. So, it was great that the legislature created these incentive packages to draw businesses into the state of Nevada. There was only one location at the time that they could move to, and that was to trick the, the park in the North. So, by, by now being able to bring on land in the South, we're going to be able to, to compete for those businesses that are coming in in the, what I consider to probably be the waning days, the last few months or year before we have a new legislature and a new governor, which very well could change the economic incentive packages that are currently available to lure businesses to Nevada.
I think you asked a question, was it the time and the duration?
That was, that was adequate.
Okay, that was adequate. Okay. How long, just curious, do you think, Mr. Duval, it'll take from a contract being signed until we are able to actually put water to a facility there?
Mayor, anticipating that you will probably sign this tonight after the council meeting, and the developers in the audience, I would expect them to begin their engineering immediately. I actually had a conversation with Mr. Adams yesterday at City Hall here, asking him about the design packages. We talked about a design-builds-type schedule where there'll be multiple packages put together at the same time in, in multiple areas being worked on. So, we're probably looking at, I don't want to go on the limb and say twelve months, but I'd rather, since I'm an engineer and I'd rather err on the conservative side, eighteen months or so.
That's exciting.
For completion. Thank you.
We'll have, we'll have shovels in the ground, or stains will be moving out there within the next couple of months.
And I, I recognize that the Solo Investments has their responsibilities to get the land ready for their future people, too.
Go ahead, because I think you touched on my points.
I just wanted to say, you know, when I became, when I, before I started mayor, and my hometown was going down the maelstrom, I kind of had to look at what, could you really save North Las Vegas? And when I looked at the assets, and I realized if we could just get enough time, North Las Vegas could be the most powerful, strong city in this region. And I know that North Las Vegas is going to be the breadbasket for this area. Our job is to diversify this economy. This city council, Solo Investments, Pogomar Design, Atkins, Dave Brown and Associates, Lisa Cole, this is a small group of people is doing more to change the direction of diversification than any other group of people has done since gaming was allowed to be here. I don't think that I speak out of, without knowledge on that, but I don't think a lot of people will believe it. But if they'll just hide and watch, it'll happen. We have found a solution that will save North Las Vegas. We have found partners who are worthy partners to help us within that desire that we had here. And, Mr. Juden, I'd like to thank you. So much of this goes forth with a little bit of vision and a whole, a lot of work, and a lot of work goes on your part, up the legislature, working very hard to get the package set so we could do this today. I know our PPP talks failed over and over. We were trying to enlist different organizations, and each time, they just came up empty, and you just kept changing the rules and laws. Fact is, this is the first project I tasked you to, to put together to make this happen, and you've done that. I'll let the audience know, I know Friday you were in Los Angeles talking to the Faraday Group about their land, but they're going to do it, that this has been an ongoing desire to get this finished. So, I would like to thank Solo Investments, sitting in back, back there. Thank you so much for having the foresight, the trust of council, and to understand that we are doing something great together. Now, as we started on this process, when the Solo Investments wanted to build this eight-inch water line, we said, "Wait a minute. If you're going to do, put a trench in the ground, maybe we'd like to share some of that trench rise with you and put a bigger pipe in the ground, we'll work with you." We came back and forth. Mr. Duval did a great job on his end, they did a good job on their end, and, but we couldn't really feel like we could trust those numbers. So, a decision was made on both sides of the agreement that the one company that we could trust who would give us an exact amount, what, what they should pay for their eight-inch line, and what we should pay for the additional line, so that the city had a fair deal and didn't get taken advantage of by the contractor, and the contractor had a fair deal, and so it became known to all of us because Mr. Larry Carroll, Pogomar Design, was so involved in the process already that we decided and knew that Harshall over at Atkins Engineering could come in and do this. And they took this plan, they worked it, they worked it, they came up with the most fair price. They worked with our assistant, I mean, our, our city attorney over here, they worked with Mr. Adair, and came back with one that we all trust. And I want to thank Atkins for bringing that stability of relationship, to keep this relationship together. A couple of other names I'd like to thank. I'd like to thank Dave Brown and Lisa Cole for working on this project over and over and over for years and years. And I don't, I think when you go home tonight, you won't even imagine what you did this evening to this region. And Lisa, thank you so much for your leadership. You are definitely the gen, the brains for the last little while on this. And I think finally, we couldn't say enough about Director Adair, Darren Adair, what a financial genius he is, and he was able to bridge the, the relationship time and time again, when we would get in negotiations and he'd fall apart, and Director, Darren Adair would pull it back together. I don't think there's a finer mind in finance in this state than Director Adair. And so, Darren, honestly, we've all put a lot into this, but it wouldn't have happened without you working out this last five percent that, that was so critical in everything we did. So, I usually don't make motions, but I kind of feel tied to this event here. So, I want to say to the skeptics who couldn't say it, get done, say whatever you want. Say whatever you think about North Las Vegas. Run your big mouths. Do whatever you do. Just hide and watch. North Las Vegas is going to be doing the greatest things in this valley, and we don't care about our skeptics. We just, we have two speeds in North Las Vegas, fast and faster, and we get our work done here. Thank you, city council. Thank you, staff. A, a real extra thank you to McKay Lemoore, city attorney, even on vacation, and Randy, you guys were fully in line with all the conference calls and everything you did. We have been blessed in North Las Vegas with leaders, with heart, vision, and drive, and they love this city, and I'm so glad to be counted on your team. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept and approve this oversizing agreement. That would be my motion. Items approved. Thank you very much.
Item thirty-six, pass and adopt resolution number twenty-six oh four, adopting a citizen participation plan, and, excuse me, twenty-six oh four, adopting a citizen participation plan, and repealing resolutions number seventeen oh seven, sixteen fifty-six, fifteen sixty-five, eleven thirty-five. Oh, sorry. Next page.
Could I take a moment for a second? Why are you guys still here? Go to work. All right? We're done with you. You're now, you're now business partners. All right? Thank you so much.
Sorry, Mayor, my notes went along on that page, and I skipped page thirty-five. Thirty-five, approve first amendment to local government contract with Codell Electrical Supply, Inc. to increase funding of the original contract from eighty-seven thousand dollars to an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars from the Utilities Enterprise Fund to purchase critical components for the city's water system of pipelines, pumping stations, and reservoirs.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this side? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Items approved.
Item thirty-six, pass and adopt resolution number twenty-six oh four, adopting a citizen participation plan, and repealing resolutions number seventeen oh seven, sixteen fifty-six, fifteen sixty-five, eleven thirty-five, nine thirty-eight, and eight forty-four.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item thirty-seven, passing it up resolution number twenty-six oh five, concerning the financing of water facilities of the city of North Las Vegas, directing the city clerk to notify the Clark County Debt Management Commission of the proposal to issue, issue general obligation water bonds of the city, providing certain details in connection therewith, and providing the effective date hereof.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this side? If not, the chair will take a motion.
To move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Item is approved. Moving on to ordinances, final action. Madam City Clerk.
Ordinances listed under final action were introduced at a previous council meeting for action at this meeting, but may include emergency ordinances. Item thirty-eight, pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight seventy-eight, amending section zero one zero of chapter sixteen of title seventeen of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately twenty-eight point six-two-plus or minus acres therein from an R-three multifamily residential district to a C-two general commercial district, Z-N oh eight eighteen, tropical and Lamb Commercial, for property generally located at the northwest corner of Tropical Parkway and Lamb Boulevard, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this fantastic project in Ward One.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item thirty-nine, pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight seventy-nine, amending section zero one zero of chapter sixteen of title seventeen of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately forty-plus or minus acres therein from an O-L land, open land district to an M-two general industrial district, Z-N oh seven eighteen, tropical distribution center Aspen, for property generally located at the northwest corner of Van Road and Mount Hood Street, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item forty, passing it up ordinance number twenty-eight eighty, amending section zero one zero of chapter sixteen of title seventeen of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately eight point nine seven-plus or minus acres therein from an O-L open land district to an M-two general industrial district, Z-N oh nine eighteen, Green Therapeutics, for property generally located at the southeast corner of Mount Hood Street and Tropical Parkway, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, just like item number thirty-nine, now this land becomes real estate, and I make the motion to approve.
We have a good motion. Please cast your vote.
You see, I remember what you say.
Items approved.
Item forty-one, pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight eighty-two, amending title five of the municipal code by repealing an existing chapter five point fourteen, childcare facilities, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this side? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to city manager's report.
Mayor, Mayor and council, we've had a nice, long meeting. Mr., our historian, Mr. Albert, who's not here, as we made history, which is fine because he reports on it. So, he had actually had a, a report today, and I asked him if we could do it next meeting because I anticipated this being a long meeting, so, and, and I know we have some meetings after this, so I don't have anything to report, but I thank you for your confidence and the opportunity to serve. I'm excited for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the public forum, Mr. Steve Schoeff, you've delivered a card. Mr. Johnson, you also want to speak after Mr. Schoeff? That would be fine.
Good evening, council. My name's Steve Schoeff, fifty-six, twenty-two, Midnight Breeze Street, North Las Vegas. I have the privilege of being on Parks and Rec Committee, and today Jeff and his brother Steve and I all went over to Kyle Ranch. We usually stop by there on the way over here. We don't get to sight of town very often, but we went by there mostly because the water that's always running off. I, I know that Councilman Barone knows about this, but there's a lot of water running out, out of that property from the springs that, that I think we should consider maybe trying to capture and, and use for something at the park. Another thing I noticed while we were there is the tamarisk are taking over again. They're everywhere there. They're in the orchard, they're in every place where there's water. There's weeds, there's a, a, another invasive species called a Scotch broom or a sweet broom. Any place the city has planted a plant, that broom has taken that spot now. So, you have cactus with this big broom growing out of it, you have your red yuccas with the big broom growing out of it. The weeds are way out of control over there, and it didn't just happen in the past two or three weeks. This is months' worth of growth on these plants. I don't know if, if we need to get some kind of group together, a friends group to take care of Kyle Ranch and help the city. I know you're help, you're short on help. I would be more than happy to volunteer and go over there and help and keep some of the weeds down in that area because with the water that you have on that project, it's not, or at that park, it's not going to take very long for it not to be an issue, but they're going to take over the whole park, and all the work that you've done over there is going to be for naught. So, it's just, just, I just wanted to bring that up. One other thing, I, I always drive by a Petiti pool. I went by there last Tuesday, and I noticed that you have fixed the fencing over there all the way around the pool. Well, I went by there this afternoon, it's tore open again. Somebody's pulled bars out of that fence so they can get into that pool area. It seems like that's an endless project over there, a problem. You need to find some... Need to find some way to make that fence more secure, just for the safety of somebody that gets in there and might drown, and also for the expense that the city has to put into that park over and over and over again. Those are the only two things I want to say, and I also wanted to congratulate our new city manager one more time. Thank you for your time.
Well noted, Steve. We, we'll get on that, where there's Eagle Scout projects, there's a lot of things we could do, you know? Thank you for me, to my attention.
And, you know, I've killed almost everything that you can, as long as I've lived here in this city, so I know what grows and what doesn't grow, and what the invasive species are. I would love to be involved in that, to help out, because like I say, some of these, you put in those beautiful beaver-tailed cactus with the beautiful pink flowers, you can't even see them right now because of some of the things that are taking their spot in that beautiful park, and I'd love to help if I could.
Well, we'll get, Mr. City Attorney, would you mind, I mean, manager, Mr. Juden, cast together, or maybe we could start working on some kind of task force to work with you on that, too?
That would be great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address? Mr. Johnson, yes?
John Johnson, forty-two sixty-five Village Hill Street, executive director of empowerment through training and education. I want to come here to talk about a couple of events that we're doing. The first one is about the MLK. I came a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago, excuse me, and talked about the fiftieth anniversary MLK, he was assassinated April fourth. Next Friday, we're having a fiftieth anniversary commemoration. We're going to have a speaking panel. There's going to be myself, as well as Lady AK, who is a radio personality for eighty-eight point one, Evelyn Piot, excuse me, Pacheco, excuse me, she is the first black, she, excuse me, she's the first black plumbers and pipe fitters union here in Las Vegas. She was the first black union for that local, as well as Minister Stretch, he's the founder and president of All Shades United and the Black Churches for Human Rights. We're going to be talking about where do we go from here? You know, there's a lot of things that's happened in the fifty, fifty years since, you know, his assassination, and the biggest thing that he talked about is civil rights, not only for African Americans, but for all Americans. So, you know, especially the climate that we're in, you know, with President Trump, you know, people are kind of leery as a nation, as, you know, where are we moving forward? So we want to just discuss specifically here in a region, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, how do we move forward as a community? The second event that I want to talk about, oh, excuse me, sorry. I also want to read a letter. City coun, excuse me, Mayor Lee made a donation, as well as some of the other city council, but there was a letter that he included, and I want to read it, because it actually really touched me. So it's actually handwritten, it says, "Good luck, brother. Please let the people sitting at my table know to have a wonderful evening. Love, John." So, you know, to me, you know, it really touched my heart, because he took the time not only to write it, but he handwrote it, which means that he thought about it, and he took some time into it. So I want to thank you for, you know, making a donation and supporting our organization, and also taking the time to write this letter. The second thing I want to talk about is there is actually a concert. About two years ago, I had an idea about concerts for education. Me and Pam, we met with the mayor, we talked about it. This year, I have an opportunity of partnering with somebody who is actually doing a concert at UNLV this Friday. It's the four-twenty Ice Cube Concert. There's actually going to be, excuse me, a pre-party. It starts at three-thirty. Councilman Barone, Senator Tick Sager Bloom, as well as Senator Patricia Spearman, they will be on stage for the pre-party at six o'clock to talk about some of the legislations around cannabis. So I just wanted to invite everybody to come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody else that would like to come to the podium and address the council at this time? This would be the time. Saying none, we will close the public comment, and this meeting is adjourned.